Good morning, everybody. I'm going to give you thirty seconds. Okay, we're all ready. So, good morning, welcome to this morning's Licensing Committee. My name is councillor James Gibson, I'm Chair of the Licensing Committee. And if we go round, councillors to my left, please introduce themselves. Good morning, everybody. Councillor Asker Ali for Gipton and Hare Hills.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Jordan Bowden, Round Hay Ward.
Luke Farley, Labour Representative for Bermondorf and Richmond Hill.
Kate Hague, Labour and Cooperative Farnley and Warkley.
Stephen Hallroyd, Adsley and Robin Hood.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Sharon Hamilton, Moutown and Meanwood Ward. And happy new year, still January.
Hello, everyone. Councillor Lisa Martin, Round Hay Ward.
Councillor Ed Carlyle for Hanslet and Riverside Ward.
Morning, Jane Senior, Marley South.
Councillor Dawn Siri, Pudsey Ward.
Councillor Neil Buckley, All Woodley Ward.
Excellent work, so going to do, just to make you aware, Melvin, if you want to get a cup of tea, we're going to do Agenda Item Number Eight first, so you've got a bit of time to settle in.
Thank you, Chair, but I'm good, but thank you very much.
You sure?
Thank you.
Well, in that case, we'll stick to the agenda as it is written then. Okay, so, just to remind members and guests that this is being streamed live via webcast. And I'm going to ask Helen now to introduce the procedure.
Thank you, Chair. Just to go through the procedural matters at the top of the agenda. Under Agenda Item Number One, there's no appeals against refusal of inspection of documents. Under Agenda Item Two, the agenda doesn't actually contain any exempt information, but members will note that the report on Item Seven, the Leeds Festival, does highlight that the committee might consider it appropriate to go into for the public to be excluded from the part of the meeting to allow representatives of the Safety Advisory Group and Festival Republic to provide members with exempt information associated with the festival last year, specifically if it relates to the financial or business affairs of a particular person or organisation, or anything to do with prevention or investigation or prosecution of crimes, so anything that falls under the Access to Information Procedure Rules 10.43 and 7. So I'd ask the committee to consider that during the discussions on that item, and if at any point where that kind of information is due to be discussed, we'll ask members to go into private session and exclude the public at that point. Under Agenda Item Number Three, late items, there's no formal late items of business. However, a supplementary information relating to the Leeds Festival at Item Seven was previously published and circulated to members. And also an apology for me for Item Eight, the table at paragraph fifteen on the health of the Licensing Objective Report didn't pull through in the agenda making, and I didn't spot it, so I did provide that to members last night via email. Agenda Item Number Four, could I ask members to declare any interests, please? I can't see any, thank you. So, under Agenda Item Number Five, apologies for absence have been received from councillor Downs, who may be late, and councillor Hinchcliffe. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Helen. Okay, Agenda Item... Councillor Hamilton kindly requests that you pull the microphones closer to you, please, when you're speaking. Okay, Agenda Item Number Six, minutes of the previous meeting held on the seventeenth of September twenty-four, do members accept these as a correct record? Nobody indicating, so we're all happy with those, thank you very much. In which case then we turn on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is Leeds Festival twenty-two forty-four. So what we'll do first, I think, is we'll go around to all the officers that are here in attendance, officers and guests, to introduce themselves before we start with the presentation from Festival Republic. Yep?
Yep, morning, everyone. My name's Nick Gardner from the traffic team at Leeds City Council.
Good morning, everybody. Dave Skupski, Operations Manager and Festival Lead for National Highways.
Good morning, everyone. Downbound Public Health Lead for Drugs and Alcohol, Leeds City Council.
Good morning, Mick Lawny, West Yorkshire Fire Service.
Good morning, Claire Smith, Head of Safety and Ableton and Social Behaviour, Leeds City Council.
Good morning, I'm Dan Wood. I'm a Police Superintendent with West Yorkshire Police, and I'm the Lead Public Order Public Safety Commander for Leeds Festival.
Morning, I'm Vicky Chapman. I'm Head of Sustainability for Live Nation and Festival Republic.
Sorry, just say that again, I didn't quite catch it.
Vicky Chapman.
Nikki.
Vicky.
Vicky, Vicky, Vicky.
Good morning, Melvin Byrne, Festival Republic.
Good morning, I'm Georgie Henryhan, Event Manager for Festival Republic.
Good morning, Hannah Corrigan, Licensing Coordinator for Festival Republic.
Morning, Chris Vothergal, Yorkshire Hamlet and Mercy Planning.
Good morning, Richard Perry, Taxi and Private Hire Licensing.
Jason Singh, Leeds City Council, Taxi and Private Hire Licensing.
Ruth Turner, Team Manager, Environmental Health.
Good morning, everybody. John Mulcahy, Chief Officer, Elections and Regulatory. Both licensing teams and environmental health fall under my remit.
Morning, everybody. Matthew Nelson, on behalf of Entertainment Licensing.
Nicola Raper, Entertainment Licensing.
Good morning, Rachel Jarrett, Emergency Planning Officer, attending as SAGS apart.
Good morning, Nick Lawrence, Environmental Services, Leeds City Council.
Great, thank you very much, everybody, and welcome. Entertainment Licensing, are you presenting the report, Nicola, Matthew? Yep.
Thank you, Chair, good morning, everybody. So to provide the committee with feedback following the festival for two thousand and twenty-four, we have available representatives of Festival Republic, partners of the Safety Advisory Group and councillor Harrington, who were councillor Robinson, jointly chairs a local council and residents working group. Written statements providing feedback have been supplied by Leeds City Council's Cleansing Services and the Security Industry Authority. The statement by the former service has been published as a supplementary item. However, we do have Nick Lawrence on behalf of that service in attendance. The statement from the Security Industry Authority, who have given their apologies, have provided, sorry, a statement which relates, where part of it relates to the operational matters for that service, and my intention is to read that during private session if that's appropriate for members. So other than the debrief and consideration to enter private session, a recommendation for the committee is to support the future development of working groups. I appreciate that we have touched on the membership of the traffic taxi and private hire subgroup previously, however, today may be a good opportunity to start afresh and to seek interest from committee members to be part of that group. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Matthew. Any questions for Matthew? More importantly, any volunteers for the subcommittees? So there's a traffic management subcommittee, which includes obviously taxis, and there's the environmental health, environmental cleanup, sorry? Sustainability?
Sustainability subgroup as well, Chair.
Sustainability subgroup, so any volunteers for both of those, please? Lisa? Yeah? Environmental one? Taxi? Sustainability. Okay. Anybody else? I mean, that's enough to go for, because I'll, to start with, because I will sit on both, so that's fine. Great stuff. Okay, so if there's no questions for Entertainment Licensing, we'll move over to Melvin then, please, and the Festival Republic team.
Chair, thank you. I'll get Georgie to go through the full report, really, but just a sort of brief summary. You know, the weekend was pretty successful for us in lots of ways, lots of bands played, lots of festival goers attended, lots of festival goers enjoyed it, in fact, almost all of the festival goers enjoyed it. We were beset by a storm on the Friday morning, which was significant, and we, you know, we ourselves effectively began the morning in major incident mode, didn't really move to that position until late morning, when the first Safety Advisory Group meeting was held. We, that said, the control room was set up as though we were in operation of a major incident, and the liaison with all the different agencies was such that the communication was constant. We can go more into that perhaps in the private session, Chair, if you don't mind. Suffice to say that we did open. You know, it is in a, in that situation, you are faced with that decision of, do you abandon the show and ask everybody to leave? Do you feel that you can maintain sufficient public safety to keep everybody safe enough on site and allow the show to go ahead? We erred on the side of that, we felt that, I felt that, it was myself obviously taking that decision, I felt that was the right thing to do. We did delay the arrival of the day tickets, in particular those that were coming on public transport and coming into the city centre. We felt it was inappropriate to add those into the site until we were clear that, you know, uncertain that we would be able to go ahead for that day. And I don't think we therefore allowed the movement of people from the city centre on the buses that we were, that were being supplied until, I think it was after twelve, twelve oh six, we started the bus operation, because at that point, we were at that point where we were taking the decision that we would go ahead. Clearly we needed, not clearly, I wanted to wait until after the Safety Advisory Group meeting at eleven fifteen before we formally took that decision, because I wanted everybody to sign off on that. And we went ahead, we lost what was the second stage, the Radio One tent for the entire weekend, and we lost what was the, a new stage, the ORX tent, for the entire weekend. But we kept everything else pretty much going, and I think a good time was had by all thereafter. I wasn't in attendance, I was in Reading, but obviously working as gold throughout that period, and arrived either later that afternoon or the following morning to glorious weather, Chair, wondering what all the fuss had been about, but I could see what the fuss had been about. And yeah, we had a pretty good weekend from that point onwards, really, I think. But Georgie, I'll hand over to Georgie for the detail of the, of how the weekend went.
Thank you, Melvin. We've put together a presentation which you'll be able to see on your screens now. Thank you all for your time today and for the opportunity for allowing us to present the Leeds Festival twenty-two forty-four debrief. I just want to start off with a general overview of the event. Our camp sites were operational from the twenty-first of August to the twenty-sixth of August, with our main entertainment taking place on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. In terms of our headliners across the weekend, on the Friday, we saw Liam Gallagher and Catfish and the Bottoemen. On Saturday, Blink One Eight Two and Jerry Cinnamon, and on the Sunday, closing the weekend, was Fred Again and Lana Del Rey. As Melvin just touched on, we did experience severe winds due to the effects of Storm Lillian, particularly on the Friday, with the safety of our festival goers and our staff being our number-one priority. Changes to event operations needed to be actioned due to the damages caused by the winds, as Melvin just touched on, obviously with the closure of those stages and the delayed opening times on the Friday, as well as rescheduling and the cancellation of artists across the weekend, and damages to site infrastructure, including signage that affected both internal wayfinding as well as the external traffic operations. And we also experienced some off-site noise issues due to this. In terms of the multi-agency communication that took place around this incident, a meeting was held with the Leeds City Council Emergency Planning Team on Thursday, the twenty-second of August, to discuss possible impacts and contingency plans, as well as having an onsite SAG meeting on the Thursday to also discuss this. And on the Friday, as Melvin touched on, we had multiple meetings with the SAG to discuss the impacts of the storm and the actions that were being taken on site. And we continued with the weekend with our daily five PM site meetings. In terms of how we communicated to patrons during this incident, we used our festival app, which we have the ability to do push notifications on, as well as on social media and via our staff on ground. These messages included safety messaging, such as secure your tents and your belongings, advice on not to travel to the site at this time, as well as updates on arena opening times, and advice on where our customers could purchase camping gear from our onsite traders, as well as the tent repair services that we had on site through Decathlon. Moving on to the event updates that we saw in two thousand and twenty-four from the two thousand and twenty-three event, we did have a new arena layout this year with the addition of the Chevron stage and the ORX and the Radio One stage, however, those two stages were unable to operate due to the impacts of the Friday storm. We also saw late-night entertainment take place within the arena with the Silent Disco being held on the Chevron, as well as the BBC intro stage on the Friday. Updates of the camp sites and the village, from the popularity and the demand of the eco campsite, we saw an additional eco campsite operate in two thousand and twenty-four, having both a yellow and green, and we also had the addition of the Quiet Camp and the Solo Camp. The Anachronica Stage did not operate in two thousand and twenty-four, and we also had two campsite DJs rather than four, which were operational in two thousand and twenty-three. We also had a sensory space located in the village, which provided a calm and quiet space for customers to go to if they just wanted a break from the event. In terms of operations, we saw a new traffic provider operate the pick-up and drop-off space with a new operational plan, which was successfully implemented. We also had a new fire safety provider this year, being Rapid Fire, and we had West Yorkshire Fire Service representatives in event control this year, which worked well. We saw the removal of the over eighteen wristband and with the continuation of the ID checks at all bars across the event, and we also saw the introduction of onsite waste sorting facilities in two thousand and twenty-four. The QR code system that captured the data of sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds attending with or without an adult was implemented again in two thousand and twenty-four, and this data was shared at our daily SAG meetings. You can see the data up on the screens here, with total of attendees accompanied being thirty-four percent and unaccompanied being sixty-six percent. In terms of our bars and alcohol, our main bars were run by Central Fusion with a challenge twenty-one policy implemented across the site, and our alcohol compliance was managed by our bar operator as well as the FR Licensing Office. In terms of challenges, in two thousand and twenty-four, we saw forty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety, with two thousand two hundred and sixteen refusals and a hundred and eighty ID confiscations. Moving on to environmental health, noise monitoring took place during the hours of entertainment by both REA Acoustics and Leeds City Council EH shows, and all noise readings were compliant throughout the event. We received fifteen noise complaints via our event hotline, and eight were received by Leeds City Council. In terms of water safety, water testing occurred during both the build and during the show, with all samples returning a clear result. We had a hundred and twenty-six food traders at the two thousand and twenty-four event, and we had Go Safe events contracted as our independent environmental health officers, which undertook food hygiene inspections across the weekend. As mentioned previously, we do, we did have a new onsite fire safety provider, Rapid Fire, and we did have West Yorkshire Fire Service present in event control in two thousand and twenty-four, and we also had the continual ban on campfires and disposable stoves and barbecues. In terms of reported fires at the two thousand and twenty-four event, we had twenty. Moving on to traffic, we saw the successful implementation of a traffic management plan again, with the addition of National Highways managing the junction forty-four, which worked well. Moving on from the feedback that we had from two thousand and twenty-three, we did install free Wi-Fi in the pick-up and drop-off area, however, there were issues with signal and with the weather impacts that we experienced on the Friday. However, we do have a continuous aim to improve this for the two thousand and twenty-five event. The M1 roadworks caused no major impacts across the event with the successful implementation of our new Pudo operational plan. We saw the successful shuttle bus and Big Green Coach operation again in two thousand and twenty-four, and we did see that Uber surcharges across the weekend led to an increased use of the taxi service. In regards to security and stewarding, we saw the successful enhanced drug detection operations continue again in two thousand and twenty-four, as well as the successful continuation of tiger teams within the camp sites. PNC checks were completed both pre-event and on-site, and we held security working group meetings pre-event, which assisted in each security company clearly identifying their roles and areas of focus. In terms of cautions, in two thousand and twenty-four, there were thirty-seven and a hundred and twenty evictions. In terms of safeguarding, we held planning meetings with our safeguarding partners, as well as a subcommittee, prior to the show to discuss operational plans and any trends that partners may have seen pre-event. We also held daily safeguarding meetings throughout the event with our safeguarding coordinators, partners, security coordinators, as well as the police. We had twenty-four-hour safeguarding coordinators split into both day teams and night teams, and we developed a Violence Against Women and Girls campaign focused on prevention and messaging to both patrons and staff with tips on what to look out for in a victim, what to look out for in a perpetrator, and also how to intervene. And we do focus, we will be focusing on developing this in two thousand and twenty-five. You'll see on your screen here the help map that was erected across the site as well in all our air hubs, as well as on our festival app. This allowed customers to clearly locate our welfare and safeguarding facilities, as well as to show what resources we had available on site. These resources included our medical resource, which were located in both the arena and the village with twenty-four-hour coverage, as also having medics in our campsite welfare facilities. In terms of welfare, we had one within the arena, one within the village, and two within the campsites, offering twenty-four-hour coverage also, as well as our campsite managers, which were on-site for twenty-four hours and available to all festival goers. We also had the SAC on-site, which was a sexual assault referral centre, working in conjunction with West Yorkshire Police. We had BROOK, which is a sexual health and contraception service, Festival Angels, who provided roaming teams, a safe space hub, prayer cafe, and lost property services, as well as Oxfam, with an engagement space on-site, with their aim to tackle poverty and raising money for this cause. We also had Ford Leeds on-site, providing drug and alcohol support services, the Samaritans providing mental health support and suicide prevention services, the Salvation Army providing homelessness support, employment support, and youth groups, the Egalitarian, which is a women's safe space and providing drink spiking awareness, Narcotics Anonymous providing drug support service, Safe Gigs for Women, promoting female safety and raising awareness of unwanted attention at gigs, and Alcoholics Anonymous providing alcohol support, and of course, our air hubs, which provided twenty-four-hour assistance to our festival goers. The air hubs operated successfully in two thousand and twenty-four and will continue to be a key part of our safeguarding operations in two thousand and twenty-five. In two thousand and twenty-four, we had twelve air hubs located within the camp sites, providing twenty-four-hour assistance to festival goers that may just needed a chat, or to provide extra support in them calling for assistance or wayfinding to our welfare facilities. We also had one within the arena in two thousand and twenty-four, and these were staffed by community groups and charities, including People Matters, Festival Angels, Age UK, Andy's Man Club, Oxfam, S-Safe and Hot Box. With our continual focus on the safety and welfare of both our patrons and staff, we promoted numerous safety messaging and campaigns, both in the lead-up to and during the event. These included the Look Out For Each Other campaign, promoting safety around drugs and alcohol consent and keeping an eye out for one another. These were shown on our stage screens, on social media, and adverts both within the festival and on travel routes, and this was created in consultation with fact that Festival Advice Campaign Team. As mentioned previously, we had our Violence Against Women and Girls campaign, and this was promoted both in public areas and in staff areas. We had the Ask for Angela campaign, with these posters being located in our toilets and at bars, with all staff being briefed on what actions to take, as well as the Enough campaign to stop violence and harassment against women and girls, as well as seeing the BROOK consent messaging on our stage screens. And we also had our Modern Slavery campaign, which aims to reduce labour exploitation, providing information on how to get help, and these were located in our staff toilets. Data from our post-show survey showed that eighty-nine percent of our customers saw the Look Out For Each Other campaign, and ninety-three percent of those saying that they felt safe at the festival in two thousand and twenty-four. Looking ahead for planning for two thousand and twenty-five, we will continue to develop our air hub operations and explore new partnerships and their responsibility in our safeguarding operations. We have a continual focus and development of our Violence Against Women and Girls campaigns, as well as support services. We will be partnering with Safer Spaces, who is an organisation who works to prevent domestic abuse and sexual violence against women and girls at festivals and events through education, training, and immediate support services. We will also be partnering with Stamp Out Spiking, which is a charity that highlights the dangers of spiking and other effective and practical solutions to keep people safe from the harms of spiking. We'll also continue to focus and develop on our sustainable initiatives and our Take Your Tent Home campaign, as well as the continuation and development of our subcommittees in two thousand and twenty-five, including this traffic subcommittee and our taxi subcommittee, which discussed earlier, we will be holding our debrief on the fourth of February, which we would like to extend this invitation to any councillors that are interested in attending this. And we will also continue our Leeds Festival Working Group, our Safeguarding Subcommittee, and our Sustainability Subcommittee. I'd like to hand over to Vicky Chapman, our Head of Sustainability, to discuss the Sustainability Report for two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgie. Yeah, so I'll take on the next section of the report to go through the sustainability initiatives that we had at Leeds Festival twenty-four. Next slide. This is a reminder of our company-wide charter for Live Nation. We have, it's called Green Nation, and there are three core areas that we work within: public engagement, working with our fans, artists, employees, sponsors, and local community; how we engage with all of our stakeholders on sustainability and taking climate action; and the bottom left there is climate change with our climate carbon reduction goals of fifty percent by twenty thirty reduction; and then resource efficiency is the last pillar, covering waste plastic, water, and food, all the resources that we need to make these events happen. Next one. So in two thousand and twenty-four, we use a hundred percent HVO biofuel, which is a renewable form of biodiesel, and we've, we have added here on the, on the yearly totals, like the actual amount of fuel that we're using as well, because we're tracking that to make sure we're actually being efficient with that fuel. We made a ninety-four percent reduction in scope one and two greenhouse gas emissions compared to two thousand and twenty-three, and ninety-six percent reduction from our baseline year in two thousand and nineteen. And in two thousand and twenty-four, we used twelve point two nine percent less litres of fuel than in two thousand and twenty-three, just to add that as another KPI that we're tracking. Next slide. Next slide. We, we asked in our audience survey how our festival goers are travelling to the event. With the coach numbers there have slightly decreased slightly by 1%, but the shuttle buses on ingress and egress have increased, 17% for ingress and 28% for egress. We track this and we do encourage attendees to travel by a public transport where they can, and you can see that there's, yeah, a high amount, a high proportion of the attendees do use the public transport services that are available to them. In terms of public engagement... Okay. In terms of public engagement, as well as the initiatives that we run ourselves, which I'll come on to in a second, we do work with other external organisations to come and deliver their campaigns, to engage with our audiences, particularly relevant to the Leeds crowd, Climate Live, a youth activist organisation who have come to the festival for a number of years now. And we also work in collaboration with Music Declares Emergency with their message of no festivals on a dead planet, which we take on to say, no Leeds on a dead planet, just to show that we want to continue doing what we love, which is going to music festivals and collecting with our friends. The weather did impact these stools, unfortunately, they did have to collate into one stool, but they were still able to engage with the, with the festival goers in that space. Next slide. So as Georgie mentioned, a big initiative that we did this year was onsite sorting of waste. In the shipping container that you can see on the right-hand side contained a glass crusher, a can baler, a cardboard baler, and back of, there was another unit separate to that, which was a conveyor belt, which actually did have a picking line, and all of the bins that were coming off the arena and the campsites were going through that picking line. We had some fantastic results, which come on to, on the next, on the next slide, but it was supported by our initiatives encouraging festival goes to bring their own reusable bottles, and we sold that in the merch stands as well. We've clearly marked water refill points throughout the site to reduce plastic bottles. We had a two-bin system this year, which was a change from our three-bin system previously. And this was to really try, because we knew that the waste sorting facility was coming onsite, it was to try and keep food and compostable items separate from everything else, because that would then make that bin of everything else ultimately would be generally the recyclable materials that are in the, in the arenas. The campsites, a little bit harder to control because people can bring in whatever they, whatever they want to the campsites, but just to try and stop that food contaminating recyclable materials as it was going through that picking line. We continue to have recycling points in each campsites, and that's supported by a recycling reward scheme, where people can win prizes for bringing back recycling to those areas. In the arena, we continued our cup, bottle, and can deposit return scheme, where people get, where festival goes can get 10p per can, couple bottle that they return. And we continue to give waste guides and briefings to all of our stakeholders and bars in particular, traders and bars in particular. So the benefits of doing the onsite sorting meant that we had clean streams of recyclable material that went straight on to reprocessing facilities, less dependency on external sorting. It gave us a lot more accurate recycling rates based on what the waste was that we were actually processing onsite, and reduced carbon footprint due to less transportation of that waste overall, because it was baled and condensed down onsite. The next slide. So they're, we're really pleased with the results. The total waste onsite reduced by 12.86%, and our recycling and composting diversion rate increased from 56% to 78%, which we use the Leeds City Council household waste recycling rate as a, as a good benchmark. I know it's different because it's commercial waste versus household waste, but it's something that we've got locally, locally that we can use as a benchmark to compare against. 47% of the recyclable materials were sorted onsite, which is huge, 299 tonnes, and the remainder did go to the local material recovery facility off-site, so there was 28% that still went off-site. We achieved zero waste to landfill. 22% went to energy from waste, which is a reduction from 44% last year, which we're really pleased with, and we're continuing to work to reduce that because we want to make sure that recyclable, recyclable material isn't going to create energy from waste. We want to capture that material and make sure it is recycled, and the associated carbon emissions with energy from waste, that's a key priority to us to keep trying to reduce that amount. And a total of 12 tonnes of camping equipment was salvaged for reuse. In terms of tents and tents left behind, we surveyed our audience afterwards to see, ask how many did leave their tents behind. The majority said that they didn't, but that is, yeah, whether they were actually, how honest they were being in a survey, that's kind of one of the, one of the kind of downsides of surveys, but it did give us some really good intel on why people leave their tents behind. The primary reason last year was due to damage, with 63% citing broken tents attributed to the adverse weather conditions. And additional reasons were the tents were too heavy, or they were too tired, so that shows that we can work with our kind of behaviour change campaigns to see how we can, like, focus in on some of those reasons where people are leaving tents, if we can help to change their minds there. Next slide. So there's a lot of info, it's my report, but I'll just pull out the key, the key pieces. We continued our recycling reward scheme, as mentioned before. Decathlon were onsite this year with an activation promoting their No Tent Left Behind campaign, and they bought a lot of games, it was really engaging, people could actually sign up to a pledge at the stall as well. One huge benefit was the tent repair services, as been mentioned previously, putting out those push notifications on the day that people were, yeah, were affected by the weather really helped, and Decathlon being able, they had a bike where they were able to go into the campsites and, and help people with their tent repairs. 58 people engaged in this service over the weekend, and they also had a tent return scheme, so you could buy a tent from Decathlon, and then if you didn't want it after the festival, return it, and you got a voucher to spend in store. We don't have specific figures for Leeds particularly, but for their campaign overall, 583 people engaged with that throughout the whole summer, with 240 people, at their last count, actually returning their tents for those gift card refunds. So we are meeting with Decathlon this week on Friday to see how we can extend that and work with them more closely on that campaign. I think the more publicity we can give them to encourage people to use it and to know that it's there, the better, really. And we had our green team on the ground, engaging with the customers and telling people about our sustainability campaigns. We also put out a tent buy and guide before the festival to educate our customers about the importance of a good sturdy tent that's going to last them, so we continue to, to put that out and potentially working with Decathlon or others on that. And we also worked with Leeds City College this year, creating banners with their students and a local designer, local fashion designer, Sarah Thompson, who ran workshops with students to create banners that were displayed in the campsites to encourage people to take their tents home. As previously mentioned, we expanded our eco campsites in yellow and green, and then that was, yeah, continued to be a success, with 96% of tents were taken home across both of the eco campsites. Next slide. And then the salvage operation continued. It was the largest operation that we've done to date, with 343 people attending, and 12 tonnes of salvage, 12 tonnes of equipment was salvaged, which was three more tonnes than 2023. We, we had a number of steps to improve the salvage process this year with each... Allowing better pre-panning and comms. We set up auto responses on application, and when applications were approved. We worked together with the council to decline groups who'd applied to collect tents for the homeless, but we worked on the messaging there with yourself, with the council, and a number of those groups were able to reapply by not collecting tents. We have new risk assessment and health and safety guidance issued for taking tents down, which is very thorough, and the briefing location changed to try to reduce the impact of the traffic flow onsite. We had a dedicated wristband, we're signing in and outs, and extended access from half a day to a day and a half, and we set up a dedicated WhatsApp group for quick communication on the ground onsite, which received really good feedback. So thank you.
Excellent, thank you. That was a very thorough presentation, really appreciate it. A lot of good work has gone into that, as we can all see. Members, do we have questions? No questions. Thank you, Luke.
Thanks, Chair. I'm just thinking, I mean, as thrilling as that presentation was, perhaps next time, could we get the slides sent to us beforehand? So obviously, we can then process the information. If there are any particular questions that we do have, we come forearmed. Thank you.
Of course, Chair, that's, it's a good point. There's a lot of detail in it, and I think it would have benefited everybody if you'd had that before, so apologies.
Totally, very useful to have. councillor Carlisle first, please.
Yes, so thank you very much for the presentation, for all your work on this. I think a lot of, a lot of the detail of what we need, what I hope we're going to talk about, about the way salvaging will, will be something we can unpack in the sustainability subgroup, but I think I just wanted to raise a few of the headlines now. So I and I think, yeah, other members of this committee have been in contact with some of the campaigners and activists who've been part of the salvage operation, and I think there is a recognition that there is some really good aspirations, admirable aspirations, but I think it's also worth saying once again that regrettably Leeds, and I think Reading as well, I don't think it's particular to Leeds, but there is absolute carnage onsite, and it's embarrassing for the city, maybe it's embarrassing for the festival, and, yeah, every year it's this thing on social media that you'll see and we see, and it's, yeah, it feels like a bit of a stain on, on the city. So I'd, I'd like us to, yeah, to really work together to just make things a lot better. I think just some of the headlines that I'd want to, yeah, I think some of the headlines or questions that I've got, and again, if you want to respond to them now, great, if not, we can, we can bring them up in the subgroup, but I think, yeah, there is a sense that it could be a lot more effort put towards around kind of tent rentals, more effort helping people pack away. I know there is the green volunteers, but there was, I think that the numbers were capped on that, and I wonder if we could not just get a lot more extra people in to help buy it and feel that their tents are heavy, just kind of help them to just really get themselves focused on the Monday. Salvagers said, I mean, I feel like there's, I'm hearing conflicting messages, but salvagers said to me that they felt they were only allowed on 40% of the site. Some of them and some of your staff apparently felt that this was the worst year ever. I wasn't there, so I can't comment, but I'm just passing on comments. There was a sense that they had less time this year than the previous year onsite, which jarred a little bit with what you were saying then. Some of them felt that the comms were not as good as they could have been, like, some of them were kind of hearing quite late on that, that they could come or that were approved, and actually, some of them said, you know, I've actually got plans now for next week, so I'm not, I'm not going to come. Apparently, still an issue with some of the security staff telling festival goes they can leave their tents, they'll go to charity, that was again, reported again. Bulldozing kind of on bits of the sites, you know, just tents being kind of bulldozed, and on bits of the site that the salvagers were told that they, they just didn't have access to. And I suppose, finally, I suppose my question is surely you are spending an absolute fortune, or I don't know, somewhat of a fortune, just kind of disposing of all this kind of stuff that you're bulldozing? So surely it is very much, I mean, it is your worthy while, and you know it's worthy while, to really, really give this a lot of, I don't know, just more intention, more attention so that this can become a zero-waste festival in the coming few years? Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Carlisle, I would, we will all have a different point of view about whether it's a stain on the city. I do not believe it's a stain on the city at all. Was it the worst year ever? Well, perhaps it was, but if you imagine the storm that we received on Friday of the festival, and the debris that was caused as a result of that, quite frankly, I wouldn't be surprised if it was the worst year ever. And for none of you, the people that you're talking to, to have taken that into account would be a mistake, in my view, because the storm was almost as significant as what Ireland and Northern Ireland and parts of the north of England and Scotland have received just last week, on a bigger landmass, but actually not much different at all. In terms of, there would have been some parts of the site that were restricted because we didn't consider them to be safe for the salvagers to go into, because they weren't briefed in health and safety, et cetera, et cetera, and the storm would have resulted in some parts of the site that we would have considered to be inappropriate for salvagers to go and work. So yes, that's pretty normal, in my view. Do the security staff tell the punters that they can leave the tents? I don't believe they do, but do some of the punters tell each other that the security staff have said that they can leave the sites? Almost certainly, because it makes them feel better. And the idea that we don't resource it and don't make the effort, which was almost the implication, I think, of what you were saying, is just not true. It's huge effort, but we are dealing with teenagers. We are dealing with teenagers that can't keep their bedrooms clean, when their mum and dad is trying to do, force them to do so, day in, day out, in their own house, and without parental control, trust me, it's even harder. So we work really hard on it. I think in the working group, you will see how hard we work on it. We're not closed to suggestion, we're not closed to improvement, we're constantly looking for improvement, but at no point do I consider it to be a stain on this city.
Just a follow-up question on that, because from what councillor Carlisle said, but your, your figures sort of differ from that account, so I presume are the salvagers committing first, and then your operation to sort of, you know, with the conveyor belts and the pickers and all of that, is that afterwards, which would explain why there might be a disparity?
I mean, essentially, the conveyor belt is operational from the point that the, the people arrive onsite, in fact, even before, from the point that the staff are setting up. We, I, I chose that I wanted to go to a conveyor belt system because I don't believe, I'm not capable of putting my rubbish in the right bin, time and time and time again. I do not know which bin to put particular bits of rubbish in, and therefore, more was going to, fuel for land waste, land waste, you know, the fuel piece than should have been, and we wanted to separate more of it. That activity is going on all of the time throughout the festival. It's picking the walkways in the campsites, it's picking the, it's cleaning the bins in the campsites, it's cleaning the bins in the arena, et cetera, et cetera, it's cleaning the arena, all of that sort of stuff. But then as people leave, as people leave their tents, they empty their tents of all of their rubbish, and at that point, they, some of them pick their tents up and take them, the tents, some of them leave their tents, but those that pick up their tents and pack them up and take them away, they don't pack all of their rubbish away, they just leave that on the ground. And that, of course, is left on the ground, dispersed among other tents that have been left complete, there's rubbish in the tents, there's rubbish outside of the tents, et cetera, because the people haven't cleaned up. And we, our litter pickers in the main don't mill through the tents during the course of the weekend, because people live, leave what are semi-personal items outside of their tents, in their little enclave of their five or six tents that they've got with their friends. You know, they leave half a tin of beer that they're intending to drink later in the day. If we pick that up, there's an almighty fuss. They leave their, their blow-up dinosaurs that have all gone saggy and the air's come out of them, but if we pick them up and they look like rubbish, we take them away and there's an almighty fuss. We can't salvage, we can't deal with that. We can't salvage, we can't deal with that sort of stuff until they have left and we know that it is done. And the salvagers come into that, of course they do, because they are taking the opportunity of salvaging tents that have been left that are perfectly good, but they are also in the middle of quite a degree of debris at the same time. And so, yes, it does look messy, but it does get cleaned up pretty quickly. But to, to those of us that wish that teenagers were perfect, it looks very messy.
Do the salvagers have the opportunity to sort of see how you've cleaned up after they've been and seen the sort of, the operation where you're, you're picking through and making sure that you're, you're recycling as much as you can, so that they can actually see that the good work that you're doing? Because maybe that might be useful, because they're only coming at the point where they see it as an almighty mess, they're not seeing afterwards, like, for example, in the shipping containers where it was all clearly packed, all the recycled stuff. Maybe that might be a good idea to give them a better understanding of how you are working to, to improve things?
Chair, that, that, that is a very good idea, and it's an idea that I've already adopted. That, that activity last year was a back-of-house activity. You know, I, non-public, it wasn't being seen. The intention this year at all of the festivals that I'm involved in is to make that a front-of-house activity, so that it will actually be placed in the village area, it will be visible to all of the punters during the entire weekend, they can see what we're doing, they can see the work that is required to, to pick up after them in the hope that they will be inspired not to leave so much behind. So, and, and then that will be in operation when the salvagers are there at the same time. So, that, that is something that's, that's in plan for this year.
Great. Thank you very much. I've been on this committee now for four years, and, and I've seen a lot of improvement in, on this issue in terms of salvage and recycling and things. So, I do appreciate your efforts. It's councillor Holroyd next, please.
Thank you. Just a quick one with regards to the weather and things. Obviously, you said that you delayed the opening times and obviously had to close, unfortunately had to close a couple of stages for the whole weekend. How did you find the crowd control through that? Did you find your message was getting through properly to the punters? Because obviously, people are going to arrive at the time they thought it was going to open, and then you'd end up with big crowds.
Yes. I mean, we, I think the communication level was incredible, to be honest. On the, we started warning people on the Wednesday of the storm coming. We knew the storm was coming, we could see that it was coming, we didn't know the severity. Of course, you don't until it arrives. And on the, between the Wednesday night and the Thursday afternoon, the camping shop, you know, that sells provisions for people that have left the airbed or they've left the mallet to pump the, to bang the tent pegs in, the camping shop sold 140,000 additional tent pegs. That said to me that everybody was getting the message, that they knew they had to button down and stabilise their tents as much as possible. In fact, the camping shop had to order more for the Thursday going into the Friday, because they'd never seen anything like that. Obviously, nobody had in that sense. So, that message, we felt, was, was, was getting out. In terms of the arrivals on site on the Friday, the day arrivals, that, that's essentially a mix of vehicular traffic and those that are arriving at the train station on the buses. We were very able and very successfully through the app and, you know, through the messaging on the app, to use that for all of them. The car park was very stable, you know, no drama at all in terms of those attendees at the car park. They got to a point, and I'm sure superintendent Wood will reaffirm that, they got to a point with the crowds in Leeds City Centre where they were getting itchy, they were getting a bit, we want to get on-site, clearly. And there was that point, why they wanted to be on the, on the blowie site and not in the Pret in, in Leeds City Centre, I don't know. But anyway, they wanted to get on the buses and get on-site. And that was a constant between ourselves and West Yorkshire Police and, I think, some of the Leeds City Council officers about the timing of that, but clearly, we couldn't do that. And, and, you know, the teams from West Yorkshire, from Leeds City Council and West Yorkshire Police were keeping the, and, and of course, the Bridge Rail team were keeping the punters informed, but they were just desperate to get there. And, you know, so that was the, that was the point that was a bit niggly. That was the only point in the entire weekend that was a bit niggly, in my view. We, we managed to get them all pretty quickly, because, again, it's that thing, we have a maximum amount of buses. I couldn't leave them in the town too long, otherwise there wouldn't be enough buses to get them there. So, it's that balancing act. And that, but that was the only bit that I felt was, 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 was niggly, councillor. And the communication thereafter was really good in terms of the stage, like, stage timing changes and things like that. And the feedback we've had from the festival goers has been really, really positive about, you know, having kept the show on the road, really, and not, not abandoning.
I've got councillor Harrington, please. Councillor Harrington's not on this committee, however, she does attend because she's one of the councillors whose ward covers this festival and always give you the opportunity to speak, councillor Harrington. And then we've got councillor Ali for a question.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, and myself and Matthew Robinson, another councillor, we chair the Leeds Festival Working Group that the lady referred to before. So, there were several issues that came up at the working group, but they basically lump into noise complaints. And unfortunately, I had more complaints from members of the public in Boston Spa and Clifford than you, your hotline and LCC had put together. That was the major issue that was brought up at the working group, and I've had quite a lot of email traffic about it since as well. So, we, we accept that the weather was horrendous, that the wind will have carried noise, but the main issues are that people are saying, why are we able to hear loud music up till five o'clock in the morning? That's the issue, that they, they thought that the music, the noise levels would go down. And the question I've also been asked is what is an acceptable noise level for licensing? What is the acceptable noise level? Because they feel that it's actually above that. The, the other thing is for travel plans, and I know you've got different subcommittees dealing with these, that the travel plans, Boston Spa and Clifford suffered from many more buses going through their villages on the Sunday and Monday with people egressing. And they're, they're wondering why that was happening, because they didn't think they were supposed to be going through those villages to actually get away from the site. And Thawna residents were unhappy about the fact that they were being asked to accept more buses going through Thawna also as an exit route. And I know that was brought up at the, the working group meeting, and that is still rumbling, I'm afraid, so we are going to have to address that. And then the final thing, really, is the Wetherby shuttle bus. And I know I've been involved in this for a number of years also, James, and that the, the improvements that have been made are phenomenal, and I know that Melvin was really serious about trying to get transport issues sorted out. And for Wetherby and the outer area, then it has actually improved that. But the communication about the timetables for that shuttle bus, where it was picking up and where it was collecting from were, quite honestly, abysmal. Even on the Saturday, people still couldn't find out, because the apps weren't working, the bus company apps weren't showing it. And I, I was constantly, I was away for the weekend, but I was constantly getting phone calls about what's happening with the Wetherby shuttle bus. So, we really, really need to try and get that further in advance, if we can, about what that's going to be, so we can publicise it. But as, as Chair said, the way that things have been managed over the preceding years, the improvements have been absolutely phenomenal, but obviously, these things are quite problematic. And whereas we had lots of issues with the parishes before, they're concentrating on these, so we will be bringing them up again at those meetings. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Do you want to respond? And I, I will open it up as well, like, traffic and national highways, et cetera, I want to, want to join in, because I know it's collaborative, that effort.
In terms of the traffic, I'll go to the traffic last, councillor Harrington. I can't, I don't have the answers on the buses, and we'll have to come back to you, and we'll have to look at that in terms of the traffic working group. It is disappointing if some of the timetables weren't up there. It's also disappointing if more buses were using routes that they shouldn't have been using. It would be even more disappointing if the buses were using routes that they should have been, but we hadn't communicated. And I rather suspect it's the latter. I doubt that they were using routes that they shouldn't have been using, but we will need to go through that in the, in the traffic working group and be able to come back to you on all of those things. In terms of the noise, I mean, obviously, the weather, you know, the high winds, the high winds didn't disappear on the, on, after the Friday, they did continue, but they weren't at storm level in that sense. We don't normally, we don't breach conditions, that's, I guess, and the environmental health team, I'm sure, will reaffirm that. We don't breach conditions, and there are set noise levels, I haven't got them at the top of my head, but there are set noise levels. And our, our environmental team work to those set noise levels and liaise with Leeds City Council, environmental health team, to ensure that we are abiding by them. So, again, the 5am has thrown me a little bit. I thought the issue was going to be pre-11, when the Chevron stage had a new sound system that was particularly loud. I have got a new design for the Chevron stage to reduce that, but that wasn't going after 11 o'clock. So, it wasn't that. I thought that was going to give me the easy answer, councillor Harrington, but unfortunately, it hasn't, so we'll have to work out exactly what it was. And again, we'll have to come back to you on that.
Does anybody, Nick, do you want to come in on that?
Yeah, we can take that up in the working group. I mean, there's no specific restrictions about traffic passing through Boston Spa or Clifford, but yet again, it's not a route that we advise the bus providers to use. So, I don't know what's happened there, but it's, that meeting is ideal for that sort of topic, because we can all sit around the table and discuss it and hope we come up with a satisfactory conclusion, so.
And environmental health, is there anything on sound levels that you want to comment on?
And, yeah, just, I mean, just to reiterate, we work very closely with Festival Republic. We have officers on site till 6 o'clock in the morning, and we do respond. They will visit, if they receive complaints, they will go out and visit and assess. There is no set decibel level, so what it is, is inaudibility. And what they say is if it's, I think it's one metre from the facade. So, effectively, if you've got your windows slightly open, you shouldn't be able to hear it inside. So, inaudibility is a bit of a misnomer, but basically, you shouldn't be able to hear it inside the property. We only receive seven com-
Residential property within the vicinity.
Sorry.
That's a residential property. That's a residential property within the vicinity of the festival, you shouldn't be able to hear it inside that property, yeah?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So, you know, what we do ask people to do is report it, so, because we do have officers on site that will respond. I've just had a look at the reports that the officers gave, and on the Thursday and the Friday, they had reports of Boston Spa and Bramham, and they went out and they got the levels reduced. So, there was some crossover this year with events in Chapel Town. So, some of the, so the officers actually did visit because they'd received complaints regarding noise from the festival, and it actually turned out it was Chapel Town Carnival that was causing the issue. So, there may be a bit of crossover.
It did have to go some way from Chapel Town to Boston Spa, but, but thank you, I take the point. councillor Ali.
Mr Byrne, mine's not much of a question. I know that this is my second year sitting on this committee, and you've made improvements for the last three years. No matter what you could have done, Storm, Lily and had other objectives in mind. I personally, as a member of this committee, want you to take this feedback from me. I'm an extremely critical and I'm a challenger to all the staff that worked with you, and thank them all that we didn't have any fatalities on that day. Could you have done anything differently? I honestly don't think that the situation you found yourself in. So, please, thank every single staff member. And I know that it was Vicky's, it is Vicky, I think, that it was first time that she's taken over from the lady that was there before. So, please, take my feedback to every single member of staff that worked on this, this year and last year, sorry, and thank them, please. What they did was beyond their capacity, and thank you.
councillor Ali, I appreciate that. Thank you very much indeed.
Okay. If members are agreeable, I think we'll move to closed session. We'll have a five-minute comfort break and then move to closed session to ask some other questions around policing, drug enforcement and health and all of that sort of stuff that we normally do in closed session. But five minutes first, is that okay with members? Yeah? Okay. I'm getting some nods. Thank you. Thank you.